Good evening. It's Monday, November the 18th, 2019. We're in the Governor's Room in the Community Center and this is the regular meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order and to do so, we would consider and adopt the agenda before us.
So moved.
If you have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foul the same sign. And the motion carries and we will adopt the agenda. If you would all join me as we rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we have any members of the studio audience that have a specific agenda item they wish to speak to tonight, we have cards in the back for you to write a question on there and you can get it to Sarah. When we get to that agenda item, we allow you opportunity and time to speak to that moment. Next we have ---- we'll act on them. We are approving tonight the regular board meeting minutes of October the 21st, 2019. We're approving special board meeting minutes of November the 12th, 2019. We're approving bills of $1,689,214.60, wire transfers of $2,572,949.93 for October. Mr. Chair, the bills are all in order. Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. We have a few personnel items tonight. We are approving the hiring of an afternoon SAC assistant with community education. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a full-time night custodian at St. Peter Middle School. This is a replacement position. We are approving the termination of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School effective November 25, 2019. We're accepting the resignation of an afternoon SAC assistant at community education effective October 11th, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a custodian at St. Peter High School effective October 30th, 2019. We're accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School effective November 6th, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a health office assistant at St. Peter High School. We're accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at St. Peter High School effective November 5th. And we are accepting an anonymous donation of $5,000 to the Landon Gron Scholarship Fund. We are also approving a high school diploma for --
Isaac Gray has met all the requirements to earn a diploma from St. Peter High School.
Thank you, Ms. Ingledair.
Thank you.
And that is the -- Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to check that the date of item 4C should be effective November 8th, not November 25th.
Very good. Everyone note that? Are we okay? Are there any individual items? If not, a motion to approve will be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve and second the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foul the same sign. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved, which brings us to our favorite agenda item of the night, other than the German, of course, is the student spotlight. And I see we have some of our younger students with us tonight.
We do. We have some wonderful students from South. So with me tonight, I have Mohammed Hussain, who is the son of Serad Mohammed, and he's here with his sister Shema and his brother Solomon. And I also have Ruby Vander Linden, who's here tonight with her mom Kendra and her dad Andy and her sister Paige. And they are here because they are some exemplary students from South Elementary. Their teachers and many of the staff members at South Elementary just really rely on them to be helping other students and to be demonstrating what star pride looks like each and every day at our school. So we're very excited to have them. They were a little bit nervous and I told them there isn't anything to worry about because it's all moms and dads and grandpas and grandmas. So they were in good hands, to which Mohammed, what did you tell me when I told you the grandpas were here? His grandpa's here. His words today were, "Yes, and Henry's grandpa's going to be there." So there's Henry's grandpa right there, right? So I said, "You're right, there's nothing to worry about." So we're just going to start and let them tell you a little bit about some of the things that they like to do at South. So Ruby, why don't you start and tell us, what is one of your favorite things to do at South?
Go to recess and math.
Math, and what are the things that you like to do in math?
Do numbers.
You like to do numbers and counting? What else do you like to do at school?
I don't know.
You don't know? Those are your main, those are your two favorite things? Okay, how about you Mohammed? What's your favorite thing to do at school?
Go to recess and go to --
I forgot the next one. Okay, that's okay. All right, I'm not sure this mic is working. We'll try this one. Let's see, I would also like for you to share a little bit, Ruby, we were talking today a little bit about what star pride is. You're here because you show star pride each and every day. You want to tell us what it looks like when we show star pride at South?
It's when you be kind and you don't dip into somebody's other bucket.
Okay, this month we are learning about bucket fillers. So Tom, what do you mean when you say we're dipping into someone's bucket? What does it mean to fill someone's bucket?
Means you be nice to them and you don't try to hurt them into their pockets.
Right, and what does it mean if you're dipping out of their bucket?
You're like being mean to them and it's called bullying.
Right, and we don't want anybody bullying, right? Want everyone to be safe at school and feel like they belong. All right, Mohammed, we were talking today and we just finished the roller skating unit. Tell them a little bit about what you learned in the roller skating unit.
You be kind and you don't push when you're about to fall and you don't push.
Right, so the mantra there is, if you go down, go down alone. Right? And so what did you learn during, what did you say that you learned how to do during that unit?
To roller skate fast.
He said he knew how to roller skate, but he learned how to go really, really fast. And before we take off, I would like you to share, what would you like to do when you grow up? What job would you like to do?
Be a vet.
Be a vet? And why?
Because I don't know.
Do you like animals and taking care of them?
Yeah.
All right, how about you Mohammed? What would you like to do when you grow up?
Be a cop.
All right, so those are the students of the month from South Elementary. Any questions?
Thank you.
They've got answers.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming and bringing your families.
I want to ask Michael, would you mind if you went ahead and sit up?
All right. I see that our student representative is not here this evening, so we'll move into action items. Tonight we have a number of action items. Many of them, most of them, are mandatory regulatory-type things that we do. And so we're just gonna churn through them. And we start out tonight, Dr. Olson, with the approval of the St. Peter Area Learning Center Cooperative Agreement.
So one of the things we've recently learned is that there are some new requirements to continue in the status of being an area learning center. As you're aware, an area learning center offers us opportunity to do a number of things. It offers us to do credit recovery programs at the high school level. It offers us to do extended day programming, interventions in reading and mathematics at the K-8 level. It allows us to do summer school at the K-8 level. It allows us to run an alternative high school program, Rock Bend High School. We've learned that we do need to have a formal cooperative agreement with at least one other school district in order to maintain our status as an area learning center. So you have in your packet a cooperative agreement drafted with the Cleveland Public Schools. In visiting with Superintendent Brian Phillips in Cleveland, he has said that they are interested and looking forward to joining in this cooperative agreement. Essentially what that means is we continue to be the fiscal host for the program, run the program in much the same way as it's been run in the past, but meet with Cleveland in a cooperative kind of venture to find out ways for improving the program and also to provide opportunities for Cleveland students that should they so choose to engage in either extended day programming at Cleveland site or in St. Peter, to engage in our credit recovery program, and to have students participate in our alternative high school program, Rock Bend High School. So we really do need to meet that requirement. It's a relatively new requirement. Visiting with Superintendent from Worthington the other day, he indicated that they're doing this exact same thing with some, with a school district in their region. So I would recommend your approval of the St. Peter Area Learning Center Cooperative Agreement with the Cleveland Public Schools. And I'll stand for any questions you might have.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jeff, we've been doing this for how many years now? Almost a decade?
Probably over a decade.
And so we get, many area school districts bring students here, especially for summer school and
Correct.
-- credit recovery issues. But the goalposts have been moved at the state level and this is needed for compliance so that we can continue to provide the service that we have for quite a long time within our community and a little bit broader area, so.
One of the things that we should note about an area learning center is it's open to any student, really from the state of Minnesota, who meets the requirements for attendance and service through an area learning center. And there are eight or 10 different qualifying criteria. So we have been opening our program up to really neighboring school districts, but again, this does require that formal arrangement.
We have a motion in a second before us. Are there other comments or clarifying questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foul the same sign. Motion carries and the agreement is approved. Next item is the approval of World's Best Workforce Report. This is an annual thing and it is like, but it's an annual report, but please remember, this is an annual report about the activities of an annual ago, right? So it's, Ms. Ingledair?
Yes, thank you. You have seen this now for several years in a row, but every year we also have to remind ourselves as well as the board and the public that the report in front of you is about last school year. This report, once approved, will be available on our website. And after that goes up on the website, by December 15th, the district has to submit a summary of this report and answer a few additional questions and submit that to MDE in December. You'll also note that in addition to the World's Best Workforce Report, the district's professional development plan is attached behind it. That's also for last, that's last school year's professional development plan and that was an additional requirement from the state, I believe, starting last year. The five areas of the World's Best Workforce Plan haven't changed since its beginning. It's about school readiness, third grade literacy, closing the gap, career and college readiness for all, and high school graduation. And so, so why, you know, say what you will about this, about this report, if a school is really firing on all cylinders in all five of those areas, you're gonna be a great school district. So we're, it's not dictated or directed to us what we measure in this report and what we choose to write about in the report, but each year, the principals who work on this monitor and adjust accordingly to what our focus areas are for the year. Each area has a smart goal attached to it. That was one area that we've become better at since feedback from the state a couple years ago that our smart goals needed some tweaking and so we've continued to work on that. The World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee members, you'll see on page three, Mr. Meeks has been the board representative on that advisory committee and we appreciate his service over the years. And this World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee has already met once this school year to get feedback on this report. And so we talked to them about what some of the focus areas had been. We spent some time that evening talking about, I believe it's section three, closing the achievement gap and areas that we're gonna focus on moving forward with that. One of those areas is access to qualified, highly qualified educators. And so we've been working out a, working out a way to somehow quantify the number of students from specific student groups that highly qualified teachers are working with in the classroom. Another area of focus for us as we move forward will be access to more diverse staff members that would reflect the diversity of our student population, which isn't always easy in rural Minnesota. So we're, one of our plans is a, hopefully a grow your own program. This is the first year that we've had college in the schools intro to ed class offered at St. Peter High School. Avid students automatically have access to those MSU college in the schools classes. So we do have, we have a diverse group of kids who are taking that introduction to ed class and hopefully we'll see some future educators out of that, out of that group. That will not be, that is not reflected in this report, however, but that was some of the discussion that took place at that advisory committee on November 4th. As you look through the report, if you have any questions for us, each of the principals were responsible for sections that obviously made more sense for their grade level. I think that I'm elected the spokesperson for this report because, as the high school principal, obviously, high school graduation rate and that college and career readiness part are pretty big at the high school.
And I think it would be fair, Ms. Ingledair, we've also had a presentation with the instructional
Yes.
-- improvement committee.
Yeah.
And there was input there about, you know, raising some of the bar in some of our areas like third grade reading proficiency to 80%.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be reflected in our plans for the 2019-2020 school year.
Correct.
And reported in the World's Best Workforce Report a year from now.
You'll be waiting with bated breath for that report, two years from now.
I always think one of the nice summaries that's in here that we don't often talk, I don't think we talk about enough, concurrent enrollment.
Yeah.
We, last year, this is last year's report, last year's report, 1,238 college credits walked across the stage at graduation.
Saving families.
That's about $385,000 worth of tuition and that's a big deal. And now we've added another course that allows concurrent enrollment. And I think it really blends together nicely, the opportunity for young people to earn college credit and yet remain in
On the high school campus.
The environment, the high school ambiance, the high school environment with their friends and not be pushed too early to go to that next stage of life, as it were. So I think that's something that is, it's nice that it's in this report and that it gets
And Sheriff Carlson, I just wanted to share a point. I happen to have a person who was a few years behind me at Alexandria High School, his name's Tom Anderson, he's on the Board of Regents at the University of Minnesota, visited with him last Saturday, and he was talking about one of the ways that the Regents are looking at reducing tuition costs is to encourage more college in the schools enrollment. So I found that kind of interesting that at the university level, at the Board of Regents level, they're talking about this. So it's a great program.
We're looking to hopefully add two more courses for next school year. If our teachers qualify, have the qualifications, there'll be an art appreciation class as well as music appreciation, which would be very valuable, especially for kids if they know that they're going into education. Those are both required courses at the college level.
So another thing in that, I mean, I love the report the way it is, I'm not suggesting, you know, last year's last year, but one of the other things we don't, oh, it is listed here, industry certifications. So keeping track of that as well, I think, gets to be more and more of a deal too because it's not necessarily a college credit, but we have kids that are able to step into the workforce and take on a real role, whether that's in healthcare or in some of our other fabrication and areas. So, nice to see that list growing as well. This does require a motion for us to approve this report.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the question. John?
Yeah, I'm just curious, and I should have caught this, I am on instructional program and it was, we went over this pretty thoroughly, but the goal that I'm reading, you know, whether it's the achievement gap, that was for last year?
Correct.
So what's, when do we establish the goals for this year? Have those been established already?
They have not. We, with the feedback from the advisory committee and meeting with the building leadership teams, we start to set those goals right now.
Okay.
So your example of the third grade reading goal of, currently it was set at 70%, that it always seems, I like to talk about it in terms of the graduation rate because it seems counterintuitive to me to set anything lower than 100% for that, which we've done in the past and gotten a ding on that because they sent it back just saying it's simply not, not a, it has to be an attainable goal, so.
Others?
I would also note that one of the other things that we'll be doing this year, allowing us to build leadership teams, we've got some site advisory meetings where we'll involve, you know, parents and community members at the site level in reflecting on some of the goals and outcomes of the World's Best Workforce Plan.
We have a motion in a second before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foul the same sign. Motion carries, it is approved. Next item we have tonight is to consider approving the 2019 to 21 Master Agreement at St. Peter Education Association. Dr. Olson, will you start, please?
Well, I think, I certainly will. You can see there's a summary of the agreement in your packet. The School Board Negotiations Committee reached a tentative agreement with the teachers on the master agreement on October 28th. As you look at the highlights, in 2019-2020, a 2% increase on the salary schedule, health insurance remains at the current defined contribution level of 12,500 single, 17,500 family, and then of course there are the benefits, social security, TRA, et cetera. In 2021, the salary increase is 2.25%. The defined contribution increases to 14,250 single, 19,250 family, benefits included. There are also a number of language changes. The key language changes relate to adding two other areas to the national certification level. One would be for licensed clinical social workers and another for speech-language pathologists that hold the national certification. The unrequested leave of absence, there's clarification that that applies to tier three and tier four qualified teachers. Some clarifications on the co-curricular schedule, there were just some headings and some areas in the co-curricular schedule that we need to clean up. A slight adjustment to the rate for co-curricular workers, driver's education, and the sixth class assignment, and a memorandum of understanding for both professional growth opportunities and micro credentials. Essentially what that helps us do is to create a pilot program with the, to work on the implementation of our graduate profile and working on micro credentials in collaboration with South Central Service Cooperative and school districts of both Waseka and Paramount. The agreement has been approved by members of the St. Peter Education Association, so with that, I'll turn it over to negotiations team. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we, on the negotiations team, met several times over the course of this fall and it seemed to go really well. And so I make a motion to approve what, the contract for 19 through 21 for the St. Peter Education Association.
One second.
Motion in a second. Is there further comment or clarifying questions, John?
I just want to make sure, I take this time to say that it's, it's really, the respect that's in the room when we negotiate with the teachers is, is really appreciated and noted by us in that we know, we know we're gonna have disagreements, but we try to talk it through and figure it out. And we know that we're not gonna get everything we want, they're not gonna get everything they want, and, and we don't, we don't make it personal. We make it about what's best for the students and the teachers are our most important vehicle for our education of our students. And so I just thought the process went really well this time.
Others? Bob?
As a third member of the committee, I urge you to support the settlement. It's, John couldn't, I couldn't say it better than what John said. It was, we had differences, we worked them out. And it was, as John said, it wasn't personal, it was all professional. It was what was good for the kids, what was good for the district, what was good for the residents of the district. But actually, I think it recognizes some of the excellent teachers, the other excellent teachers we have on our staff. It's, would it be, could we give them more? Of course. But financially, we also had some restraints and they understood that. So it was give and take, but this is a good settlement and it's within the range of other districts our size statewide. We're not out there on a limb way out, we're right in the middle. And again, I just urge you to support it and I'd like to thank in particular our chair, Tim, put a lot of time into this.
Here.
Along with Jeff did a lot of work and saved us a lot of time getting everything in order. So again, I think it's a good settlement, I urge your support.
Anyone else? The tone in the room has not always been what has been reflected by members tonight and that is very much welcome and appreciated and long looked for. And I think builds upon mutual understanding that can go forward for years to come, continue to strengthen our staff because, boy, there's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of heavy lifting ahead of us and, because when you're up, it takes more work to stay up than it does to fall down. And so, I agree. All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Agreement is approved. Next, we have consideration of the 2019-2021 Master Agreement with Paraprofessionals. Dr. Olson, you want to start?
Well, in, in much the same way, the School Board Negotiations Committee reached a tentative agreement with the paraprofessionals on October 23rd. Just some of the highlights, the first thing was, I think the board committee was very much from the position that we needed to make a market rate adjustment on the salary schedule to bring the paraprofessional salaries in line with other school districts in the area. So that occurred in both 2019-20 and 2020-21. There, we worked, I think, very collaboratively again with the paraprofessionals and their representation. So you can see it's a little bit of a higher settlement than typically has been the case, but it also reflects that, that market rate adjustment. It was important to improve the salary schedule, in particular, to improve the starting salary for those particular paraprofessional employees. There are also several language changes, standardized language for purpose of the agreement. We think a major change beginning next year is paying paraprofessionals, except for those who are currently on a 24-pay period via time sheets. That's helpful to us in a number of ways in terms of accurately paying folks for the work that's been completed. Clarifying some options in the case of school implementing flexible learning days. One thing we put in as a, with a sunset, meaning if either side determines that it's not beneficial at the end of this contract period, it sunsets, and that's the idea of 15 minutes per week of collaboration time outside of the student contact date. And then clarifying the use of personal sick leave to include absences required for sick leave by statute. So that really covers all of the categories, you know, parents-in-law, parents, brothers, sisters, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and it's really the language directly out of the statute. So, Tim?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's kind of a same thing as teachers, but I think we on the negotiations team realized and heard from not only the public, but also other members of the board, that we did need to do a market rate adjustment. As many of us know, there's certain places that are paying a lot higher, so we appreciate that and looked at that, and again, negotiated several times and met several times, and it went really well again, and so, much appreciation to the other members of the committee, as it's, tends to be late at night sometimes when things are done, but I move to approve the paraprofessional contract for 19 to 21.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Other comments? For those of you who are wondering what market adjustment means, it means that 10 years ago, we paid more than starting wages downtown at convenience stores and McDonald's and places like that. Now, prior to this, we did not, and so our wage had not, our starting wage had not kept pace with what entry-level positions were within our community. And I'm not saying that paraprofessional is categorically an entry-level position, I'm just saying that that's kind of the balance you strike when you are making a market adjustment, and, so that's what that means, for sure, in simple terms. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and the motion carries. Agreement is approved. Next, we have a resolution supporting the district's application for grant from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation.
Well, this is kind of an interesting one, and board member Meeks can probably shed a little more light on it. The Minnesota State High School League, basically, the tickets that they sell get taxed, and so that's always sort of been perplexing to me. Why would you tax tickets for high school events, high school league events? But as part of the compromise, Bob and you, you can speak to that, the tax, taxable money is put in the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, and then they have the ability to provide grants to member schools for a variety of different things. So one of those things is to help in lowering the cost for students whose family income may be limited to participate in athletic and fine arts programs. So this application has been submitted, but in order to finalize the application, we need to pass a resolution that supports that. That resolution is included in your packet, and I would recommend your passing this resolution. It would, again, helps to offset the cost of participation fees. One of the questions that I know has come up is, we are very thankful that the Bud Gilbertson Scholarship was given to the school district, and so what our goal is, is to first use the proceeds from the foundation, Minnesota State High School League Foundation, and then to use the Gilbertson funds for the remaining scholarships. We were talking about this at our administrative meeting today, and I think we scholarship about 75 students a year, and that, those fees vary depending upon if that participation fee is at the middle school, ninth grade level, or junior varsity, varsity level. So, that's, that's kind of the plan going ahead, and we'll, I'll stop there. Bob, do you want to clarify anything with that?
Just quickly, kudos to the MSBA and the High School League, Roger Aronson in particular, lead lobbyist for the High School League. I was fortunate to be one of the members appointed to the first foundation board. So we all started at ground zero and tried to build a program that would work in every district in this state, and surprisingly, there's a number of districts that won't take the time to fill out a form and submit it and get this ready. It makes no sense, but it happens. But this is a good program. This is a good move by the legislature. This helps kids that really need help. So again, I urge your support.
I'd also mention that this is the Form A grant, which is for participation fees. There's a, a second grant, which is called the Form B grant, and that can be used for a variety of other purposes. Typically, in our school district, we've used that to provide after-school transportation to places like the golf course and golf park and so on and so forth.
I don't know, did I move the resolution? If not, I will.
Just did, no.
I will.
Second. And a second. This is a resolution, so a little call with the lady on my left.
Aye.
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 Resolution is unanimous, and it passes.
Fun time's over.
Final, second, the final reading of policy 5.83, Internet Acceptable Use. Ms. Meeks?
This has been before the board several times. You've had a chance, you've had it at home to look at, but the only minor change that was made is on, and I don't have a page number because I'm working on.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, thank you. And all it does is further, gives examples of social networks. It starts with Twitter and Facebook, and it adds Instagram, Snapchat, Reddit, and similar websites or applications. This is the important policy relating to internet use by our staff and the school district. So again, you've had an opportunity to look at this, if there's any question, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but I would move fix, what is it?
Adoption.
Adoption of the internet policy. 005.8.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Policy is adopted. Next item we have is also an annual report that we are required to send to the state again, I think.
Correct. By December 1st of each year, you have to submit a compulsory attendance report, which basically indicates where students in our school district go to school, if they don't go to school in our public school. So Mr. Doherty is in charge of compiling that information and sending that report in by December 1st, so Darren, take a look.
Yeah, so chair calls or members of the board. Basically, each year in August, we start the process of collecting the information that you see in front of you on the spreadsheet. Homeschooled students are required to be, that information needs to be submitted by October 1st each year, and then what I do is I contact parochial schools in the area, and they usually just give us, give me an updated list of students that they have that reside inside our school district boundaries, and then I add those numbers to the spreadsheet, and there's about, there's 10 years of data included on this with the very bottom line, the overall numbers of students that reside in our school district that either are homeschooled or attend one of the listed parochial schools.
One of the things you can see, if you look at the total column, the final column, you can kind of see that, that history. We're at 123 students in a variety of different programs this year. A year ago, it was 121. The high was back in 2011, 12, with 177 students. So there are lots of reasons for these choices, but it's important that we track to ensure that every student in our school district is going to school.
I mean, the one thing that we have not included in this report that would be kind of fun, other than what, what's here, is the total number of kids that are in the district, right? So that you have some perspective, because 177 down to 123 is because we're so great, right? We're really good, and that's true, but I'd really like to know it's true, because we, it's just not a smaller number, because there's that many fewer kids around.
Yeah, and that would be a good data point, just to put a percentage of students on there attending our school district as compared to parochial or homeschooled.
And you will recall, it's typical, I believe it's a January, maybe February, report where we include not only this information, but then we add in the number of students open and enrolled in and out again, the number of students who are attending charter schools, et cetera. So you get the total picture of all of the different options that are taken, including PSEO, Post-Secondary Educational Options Program, and so forth.
So we have that in the right hand, and here's the left hand. Get them merged together someday. This report also requires a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, and the compulsory attendance report will be sent to the state. Information, policy again.
We're back.
Robert.
Yes, sir. This is the first reading, and this is, the policies that the committee looked at and bringing forward, very back to you again, probably in December or January. I believe it's December that we have scheduled, okay. I'm going to take just a few minutes to try to explain some of these, and Jeff, I know you'll jump in if I screw one of them up or miss something here, but you have this, so you really, I'm not going to read it to you, but there, I'm going to make some comments, in particular, when we get to the meals and the shaming of kids, what's happening at state level currently. And so let me start out. Policy 6.41 is a local estate requirements and policy. 6.42 is credits earned other than regular class, and the first one, 6.41, it was a minor change. We went from, what is it, area learning? No. Alternative learning.
Alternative learning.
Alternative learning to area learning. It's just a change in title. The second one's a little bit more important, and it's something you should think about as we go forward, and, and if you have any changes, to come back next time, but this is where we're changing the summer school or the making up for credits. It was based on seat time, our current policy. This proposal changes that to actual work done. It includes seat time, but it also makes it clear that you have to do some work, you have to pass the class to get the credits, and that's, I just think a great move, that should have probably been done earlier. Other policies, gift to employees and school board members, just adds a definition of financial interest, just, it's a common sense type of thing. This one, an unpaid meal charges. If you've been watching the paper, this, let me back up. A couple of years ago, we had a, Stuartville had a, got into the news because they took the hot lunch from the kids, in front of the kids, and dumped it into the garbage can because their parents own money on the meal account. Well, so we got some legislation passed, or the legislation was passed, that said you can't do that. Well, within two weeks, there's been another example. Richfield, one of their schools, not a district policy, one of their schools did the same thing. Took the hot meals, dumped them in the garbage can in front of the, the kids and other kids. So we already know a couple pieces of legislation is going to be moving. One in particular that I think you're going to have to watch a little bit, not because it's wrong, but because it, I don't know how else you're going to get to this, may outlaw or not allow the use of, I want it to be collection agencies. Number of districts do that, when it gets to a certain point, if it's X amount of dollars, and they'll turn it over to a collection agency. There's some feeling at the legislature evidently that, and I think the governor has added his two cents that that shouldn't be done, and so we'll see where they go. Where are you going to find the money? Because it, it's a pretty big drain on some districts, and, and it's an issue, but at the same time, it's not the kids, it's the parents that are causing this issue. So anyway, we have, there was an AG's opinion talking about participation, there were some districts that didn't let kids graduate if they hadn't paid their, if the, if the parents hadn't paid the amount for meals, that was outstanding. So the AG made it clear in an opinion that you can't do that either, so. The guts of this thing is, is that we, we're not going to be able to hold the kids responsible and to shame them or to, in some way, I know another thing is, some districts marked the hand when the kid went through the line, so they only got a bologna sandwich or something, rather than a hot meal, or, or this type of thing, so you can't do that. So sooner or later, we'll get this straightened out so every district understands, and every building understands that a kid has a right to a meal, and it's better for us to have that anyway. They do better in school, they do better in testing, they, they do better just being citizens.
Oh, no, I was going to just, just really make it clear, and I know you said this, it is our current policy that all students, regardless of their lunch account balance, will be offered a reimbursable school breakfast and lunches each day. So there isn't any of that.
Right.
Those stories that you're talking about in the St. Peter Public Schools.
And, and to Bob's point, the, what, what we're adding to this policy is, item D, school district may not deny the student opportunity to participate in graduation ceremonies or other commencement activities due to unpaid meal charges. We have never in the past, but this puts it in policy so that we don't have to fool with it.
And we, we were having a discussion about how one district, something one district does can affect the whole, the whole state. This is a good example.
Right.
Want me to go on?
Yes.
Okay. 4.12 is deposition, disposition of obsolete equipment. Just talks about what we can do with our computers to have us qualifying students. It wasn't clear in the past. This makes all the sense in the world, too. We can't use them anymore, we moved on by new ones, we have some kids that don't have any access. It's one example of where we can help them have some access. Student activity accounting, and again, it makes it clear that it's the district, the school board, that's responsible for the financial student activity accounts. It's under your, our control. School district curriculum and structural goals, and here we get back to the World's Best Workforce, to the policy, and adds some other language related to some screening. School district system accountability, 6.32, updates some advisory committee provisions and reflects requirements of the World's Best Workforce Legislation. Homeschooling, this is another one that you may want to take a little bit of time when you get home. It's not, it's not a major change, it's just one that is real, that we do provide some services to homeschooled students. They may be here for part of the day, they may not be here for any part, but we have certain requirements, and it just helps clarify that. Medication, requirements, student use possession of sunscreen products during the school day while on a school property or at a school-sponsored event. It's kind of getting back, without, a very long story short, it's getting back to the tanning beds and some of the other issues related to tanning, and it's therefore, it's flowing over into the schools. Mandated reporting child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, adds two additional crimes under the definition of sexual abuse. Student activity program clarifies that any funds raised for co-curricular activities will be spent on co-curricular activities. And finally, tobacco-free environment, they basically were updating this to take in vaping, electronic use, electronic cigarettes and vaping, so. Mr. Chair, there's quite a bit here, and that's just a very quick overview, if the board members would take a few minutes when they get home or before the next board meeting and read through these, and get to John, or Vicky, or myself, or the district office. and read through these, and get to John, or Vicki, or myself, or the district office, if you have any concerns, or any additions, or any subtractions. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions, if I can, or I don't know, maybe Jeff wants to say something.
The only thing I would mention is, I think this is, again, one of the, the nice services provided by the Minnesota School Boards Association, because they, on an annual basis, have their attorneys and their law firm look through all of the statutory changes, court cases, opinions of the, you know, iPad, and put those changes into the policies, and really get us an opportunity to say, these are the areas that you need to update your policies on, in order to be in compliance with the law and with legal opinion, so that's really what all of these are about.
And I don't think there's any action, so.
Yeah, and, so, I mean, from a timetable standpoint, we would probably wanna try and move on this yet this year.
Yeah, we'll bring these back.
For a second reading.
For a second reading.
So...
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Scher, but we do have one more committee meeting, if you, where we will be at least looking at these, if you wanna come to that, you're more than welcome.
Friday, December the thirteenth.
Right.
Seven a.m.
All right, that brings us to our reports this evening. We'll start with our principals.
We will have our fall conferences, starting this Thursday, the twenty-first, and then we'll have them also on November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. That's a fun time for us to share with parents, the growth that we've seen in their child since the start of school, and it is unbelievable how confident these three, four, and five-year-olds are. Now, when they come to school, they know right where their locker is, they're just becoming more independent, and so that's always fun to see and to share with families. We continue our partnership with the City of St. Peter, and Ms. Brenda comes, one Monday a month, to do Storytime with our preschoolers, and so we have a classroom set aside for her. She brings books for the kids, she reads them, does activities, and then she also allows them to check out books. If they have a library card, she brings all the materials, so that they can get a library card, so that's a really good partnership. Our staff has recently gone through CPR training, so all of our early childhood staff, with the exception of a couple people that will catch up, have gone through CPR training for infants, children, and adults, so of course, in our business, that's, safety is our number-one priority, and so we wanted to make sure everyone was well-trained. And then lastly, we'll be starting to get ready for our winter activities. We'll have a variety of activities going on in our center in the month of December, and inviting families to come in and see their students, and how well they are doing at school, and to see them perform, so we're excited about that.
All right, at South, we had our annual Read-A-Thon last week, so the students, that's our only onsite fundraising that we do, and we use it specifically to buy the T-shirts that we give each of our students at the start of kindergarten. So, each classroom, it was a continued stay of reading, there was a huge bear that rolled from room to room, so that we were aware which classroom was currently participating in that, it was their, their time to do nothing but stop everything and read. And we don't have our total amount in yet, but I'd like to just thank the families, the parents and grandparents who donated to that. We also finished our roller skating unit last week, and I believe North got a couple extra days, but something like that, it's just, it's a nice opportunity for students who just have never, ever been to a roller rink before, and there aren't too many around anymore. So, just a big thanks to Christie Maloney, and Madison Bergeren, and Chris Vanderheide for all the work that they did, and making sure that the students had that opportunity. Tomorrow, we have the Raptor Center that's coming to visit us, so we always look forward to that, it's been a couple of years since they've been there, so they always do a fantastic show, and after that, everyone wants to be a bird watcher, so it's always fun, and go save all the birds that are injured. We also have the privilege of the actors and actresses from the high school, Beauty and the Beast are coming, and they're going to do a little performance, like coming in costume, so we're excited for them to come to us. And Thursday evening is our first round of conferences, so it will be great to share that progress with parents.
Looking for a roller skating rink since eighty-four. Greetings from North Elementary School, where some of this will be a little bit echoey, we have, I was just sharing, the teachers and I are excited to have all the parents in on Thurs, starting on Thursday night, Thursday night, next Tuesday, and all day on Wednesday, and so, after, you know, we do the back-to-school conferences right away before the students even get into their regular routine, but now is, you know, just at the end of the first grading period, so I know that teachers are excited to share the progress of students, and I have been feeling, you know, some great questions by parents about reading and math with the new curriculum, and anything from excited with a whole different mindset with math, to, you know, people asking how to continually improve on, you know, kinda reading scores and things like that, so it's definitely gonna be some good conversations. We had our annual Veterans Day Assembly last Monday, we had Heather Gordon come and speak to us, she has a third grader at North, and it was, the kids loved it, I really appreciated it as well, it was a different, a little bit different angle on a veteran, she was actually a photojournalist in Guam for a number of years, so she told that perspective, was able to connect with the students just through pictures that she shared, and we always close it up, you know, singing Proud to Be an American, and do a silent, five-hundred kids walking silently out of the gym, which most people say, like, Mr. Dory, that, that won't happen. Oh, it does, every year, like, they walk just silently out of the gym, out of respect for our veterans and their service to our country. This week, our student council has kicked off our week-long food drive, they do that every year at this time, and donate, on the last day of the week, the fourth grade student reps take a bus, and we transport tons of boxes of donated food items down to the food shelf. I believe there was one year where it was a ton and a half of food just coming out of North, and so, the volunteers down there can never believe, like, how much food, and of course, we make it a competition, I don't know why everybody's gotta, it's always gotta be a competition, but there's definitely a little factor to that, but, you know, the focus is giving back to the community, servicing, providing a service to the community, to those families that need it. And as Dorian mentioned, we also have Beauty and the Beast cast a small sampling of the cast coming this week, do the skit, a five-minute skit in front of everybody, and then hopefully we'll question and answer a little bit, so they were trying to get some questions ready for them, and then make their way around the building and get some class photo shoots. And then, we, we also have, next week, on Tuesday, we'll do Turkey Bingo. We like to have fun at North and play a little bingo over the PA system, everybody in their classrooms has a Turkey Bingo, Bingo card, so if they get bingo, they have to gobble all the way down and grab a bag of popcorn with some candy corns in it as well, so it's hilarity, and second, third, and fourth graders gobbling down the hallway to pick up their prize. Join us if you'd like.
The cast and crew coming to the early childhood?
I haven't heard that.
Haven't heard them come to middle school yet either.
As much as I should be a member of the cast and crew, I'm not.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and to reiterate, the middle school is also on the same conference schedule as North and South in early childhood. If you haven't signed up yet, families can sign up online underneath the parent tab, and they can choose any of the teachers that their student wants to meet with. Our entrance conferences were just with the advisor, but these are really designed to talk academics with any teacher they'd like to meet with. Secondly, tomorrow night is our first parent advisory night, our topic for the night will be our block A-day, B-day schedule, we're gonna talk about the rationale, why we made the change, and how we view things going, and we'll be soliciting feedback from parents on how they, they see it going, and kinda taking that information back to our leadership team as we monitor and adjust throughout the year. And then lastly, this month is the Eye of Integrity, or, I'm sorry, of our pride, our Saints' pride, which is integrity, and part of that, we are implementing this tool, which comes from the top twenty curriculum, we had these little magnets made, so every teacher has one of these on their marker board now, and it really focuses on our behaviors and where they come from. It's called the frame, and you can put any situation in the middle, and the idea is that we're in control, and if you're not getting what you want out of a situation, it's often because you're doing something that is unproductive, and what we're doing is based on how we feel, and how we feel is based on the way we see it. So, if I see school as a waste of my time, I'm likely gonna feel icky about it, I'm gonna have some unproductive behaviors, and I'm not gonna get what I'm really after. So, this tool will hopefully help us as we manage and provide kids with tools throughout the year for how to, how to think through some situations that they get into throughout the, throughout the day.
There's obviously a lot going on at the high school right now, you've heard about the Fall Musical a few times now, but for those who are watching at home, tickets are available online or at Community Ed. There's a, there's a link on the school website under the Quick Links button on the, on the homepage, and it is filling up fast, when we go and check in there, Friday night is nearly sold out already, and our kids are gonna have access to, to get tickets with cash tomorrow, Wednesday, and Thursday, so if you're interested in seeing this show, make sure you either log on to the website, or you can get them in person at Community Ed. Josh Ellerbeck is our Student of the Month at the high school, Josh was, is the son of Debbie and Kyle Ellerbeck, and, and as you know, talking to those kids is, is so fun, getting to interview them for, before they go and meet the Lions Club members, but Josh is writing a novel. He's, he's writing a novel, and that he's, he's going to self-publish first, in hopes of perhaps getting a publisher, a publisher eventually, he plans to finish that sometime before Christmas. We're gonna have a book signing and everything for him at the high school, once, once that gets printed, so that was a really fun conversation. As part of the Achievement and Integration, as part, that's just it, Achievement and Integration Plan, the integration part of that means that high school students from three area school districts get together, visit each other's high schools, have lunch, have some dialogue about, this first one took place at East, and their dialogue was about what it's like to, what it's like to be a St. Peter High School student, what it's like to go to East, and so, our first ten kids, the ten kids who have been selected to be on this integration team were at East on November seventh, and they all had, they had great feedback from the day, they really enjoyed it, didn't really know what to expect, and, and really had a, had a good and thoughtful conversation with kids from the other schools.
Do we have any signing bonuses? I'd recommend a signing bonus. Spiff 'em, a hundred bucks for every kid that gets a transfer over here.
That's a great idea.
Maybe you could send more than three.
Only when they go to Mankato.
Well, they're sending to St. Peter next, so let's see what we can do.
Was that a variety of age groups, or was that?
It was, it was, so there were, I believe, three seniors, and the rest were underclassmen, so once those seniors graduate, we'll add more, ninth and tenth graders, yeah. I'd like to thank Jen Maldonado, she, she went along as the staff member from St. Peter High School to help facilitate conversations between those kids and students from other schools. I also brought this flyer along, it's another collaboration with the public library, Brenda McHugh, the children's librarian, wrote a grant, and has started a Great Stories Club, and this, and it provided four novels for up to, I believe, twelve high school kids, and then she's hosting, she's hosting conversations, and pizza, and movies, and all that kinda stuff throughout the school year. Along with that, she also, there were enough funds to have a presentation at the high school that we're working on with Bukata Hayes from Mankato, that will be presented to St. Peter High School students in February. Yeah.
Questions for our principals? Have a great week.
Thank you.
Dr. Olson? I have four quick items to report on, the first is, you know, we're kind of in the, in the middle of finalizing the audit for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, that period that closed on June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, so that audit report will be made to the members of the Finance Committee, at the Finance Committee meeting on December sixth, and then it will be presented to the school board at the meeting on, I believe it's December sixteenth. So, we're in all things budget, that meeting in December sixteenth, you'll also be asked to certify the levy.
Final levy.
Final levy, that is, you certify that in nineteen, it's paid twenty for fiscal year twenty-one, and we'll also be starting our discussions on our budget stabilization plan, and so, all of those items will be presented initially at the Finance Committee meeting on Friday, December sixth. We should note that we do have also a tentative agreement with the custodians, the information regarding all of the contract language agreements and salary proposals and so forth, we finalized the wording and language, and it's going forward to a vote with the custodial group within the next couple of weeks, and we certainly hope to have that back to the board table on December sixteenth. Should mention the school board election, so current incumbents Ben Leonard, Tim Lokensgard, and newcomers Bill Soderland and Tracy Stewie elected, those results were canvassed last Tuesday, November twelfth, there's a seven-day period where the election results could be contested, that period ends tomorrow, so on Wednesday, November twentieth, if there is no contest to the election results, the certificates of election and oath of office certificates will be sent out to all of the, those four board members. And then, the final thing I wanna mention, it seems like it's a long ways away, but we're scheduled to have our Hall of Fame ceremony over the Fourth of July weekend in two thousand twenty, and so, if anybody's thinking about someone that they'd like to nominate for the St. Peter High School Hall of Fame, those nominations would certainly be accepted, and just as a reminder, this Hall of Fame is for people who have achieved exemplary results in either their personal lives or professional lives, and/or their service to their community, state, nation, and world. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. Board members, anything that we've left out, Vicki?
I need to apologize to the board, I didn't make it to the policy last, policy committee meeting, because I got so excited, I got to fill in at the middle school in the nurse's office, so I forgot all about it. I'm sorry.
The tree falls in the forest.
It was funny meeting with those kids.
Hand up. Nothing.
Well, I emphatically waved at you before a committee meeting, and then I realized it wasn't you, so.
I'll wave now.
Well, one thing that I do wanna talk about, and put it on here, was the hiring of the superintendent, which is one of the tasks that the board knows, that they have before them for the coming year. We had, at our special meeting when we canvassed the results of the election on the twelfth, we also had a presentation by MSBA, talk about the process of going through and, and making a number of decisions and things about selecting a new superintendent. To that end, we have a, a study session on December second, which, that will be a key focus part of that. I'm kinda hopeful that from there, we could maybe schedule a special meeting between then and our normal meeting the sixteenth, to take some actions that, that might be talked about at that study session, and then by getting to the sixteenth, actually have a kind of a proposal where we can say, let's, let's put that position out for posting, so that we get that done prior to the Christmas break, and, and then have set a timeline of what will happen in January going forward, with the goal being that if a suitable candidate can be found, that we would have a new person selected, and that the coming board would have a new person selected and in place by mid-March of, of next year. That's kind of our outline, with a number of things to do. So, we look at our schedule, Dr. Olson, am I leaving anything out of that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I don't think so.
When we look at our upcoming schedule, we have eight meetings listed here, and I know a couple more that will likely show up. So we start, there's negotiations on November 25th, we have our study second session on December the 2nd in the media center. We got finance on the December 6th, policy on the 13th, our regular board meeting is set for the 16th, instructional program committee is set for December 19th, and then the organizational meeting for the new board will be January the 6th at 6:30, and then the regular board meeting will be immediately following that. So somewhere between the 2nd and the 16th, we're going to probably try and find a spot to do a special meeting so that we can get some stuff formatted to work by the 16th. So I know the nights are longer, we got to use that time up. And with that.
I move to adjourn.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much. Bill?
Tim.
Vicki is. I have a magazine for you.